Okay. Okay, I'd like to call the January eleventh special meeting of the White Lake Library Board to order. Okay, can I get someone to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
And I'm second.
Okay. And we do have public with us tonight. Is it Dustin?
Yes.
Hi Dustin, can you identify yourself and your address? And then you you'll have three minutes, three minutes to say anything you want to say. You don't want to, okay. Then do I need, I don't need to record him. I don't have to record you unless you speak. So if you're just here to observe, no problem. Okay, it was good to see you in person. Okay. And
we had a first and a second.
Oh, well, you know, I haven't done this in a while. So all in favor of the agenda approval? The eyes have it. There's four eyes. Do I have to say anything? Did you have to, why am I talking to you? Did we have to do a roll call?
Yeah.
Do we do the roll call after the call to order? And the process is that what? Okay. Just so I know for next time.
You typically start with president.
I do.
All right, President, Ben Schultz.
Do I say my name? Present?
First my glaze. Present. I have absolutely.
Okay. So we have public but no comments. And the only business on our agenda this evening is new business, which is Lord Library Board Member Candidate Interviews. We have three people interviewing. And we've got a person who has a financial background. We've got a person who's got a background in books and in the library T L N. And that, and then we've got a person who has a background in being on other boards and also grant writing. So we felt they were all good candidates. In fact, we thought all eleven were good candidates. It was, it was a hard decision to make. So we, you know, looked at their specialties and where they could fit in with the other pieces of what we've got on our board. And so we thought these were three good people for you to evaluate. Okay? So I'm gonna let you guys ask questions since we already have. And when you're done, then if we've got any, any new questions, we can ask them. And then then we'll go to the next person. Yeah, okay. Is Caroline first?
Yes.
Okay, Caroline's first. Yeah. Carolyn. Carolyn, sorry. That's true. I remember. And she's a board, a Friends member, right? Yes, I thought, okay.
And she, she
Hi Carrie. Do you have a preference between Carolyn and Carrie?
Fine for you. Okay, thank you. All right.
Look, Carolyn, if you're in trouble.
Yeah.
Carolyn, if you're in trouble.
Often that was the case.
All right. So you've met us already, Carolyn. I'm Jen, the president. This is Rich, our vice president.
Hello.
Gwen is our treasurer. Karen is a trustee member. And Jake is our secretary. And then that spot there is open for somebody. So that's, that's a spot we're gonna fill tonight. So we're gonna let Jake and Karen start with a question.
Okay.
Just if you want to just say a few words, even though we've already heard your, your background and stuff, just, you know, introduce yourself to them and and then they'll have some questions and then we might jump in in the end. But is it twenty or twenty-five minutes or half hour? Twenty-five minutes, okay.
And also any questions that you have for us that you thought of.
Yeah, I don't have anything on top of my head at the moment, but I certainly may for then. So I will just let you know, I'm Carolyn or Carrie Francis. I spent fifteen years working at Wayne State University and my interest in this, I just happened to see the flyer posted when I was here picking up. I mentioned that I'm a true lover of audiobooks. So I'm here at the library very regularly and I have been for many, many years. I raised both of my kids coming to the library at a regular basis. And I still come very often. I get all of my books as well as my mother-in-law's books from the used book sale. So I'm here for every single book sale. So big supporter. I absolutely love the library. And I think what you're doing is so exciting. You're offering so much more to the community than has been offered in the past. You know, like I'm not, I was just out there looking at the board and this is not the library of my childhood by a long shot because you have so many wonderful programs. And I just think it's so great to even have this resource in the community. I think I could potentially be a good fit for the board because I have a great deal of work on committees and boards over the course of my career. I've worked, I've actually chaired the Michigan Cancer Consortium's Membership Committee. I have worked on national committees through the National Cancer Institute. I also served on a host of committees as a an employee at Wayne State. One example would be the Commission on the Status of Women, their Gender Equity Subcommittee. So that's just a few to give you an example. One other, as a volunteer, I work on my pastoral call committee for my congregation. Beyond that, as I said, I'm a longtime regular user. And then my third reason that I think I could be a good fit is because I do have a master's in public administration, which allows me to have a broad, general understanding of how public institutions should work.
It's been taking a while to get going on some questions, but once we get going, we'll probably be just fine. So all the things that are in the library and you said you use the audiobooks as one of your, like, big things, one of your passions. So tell me the three things like that you like best about the library that like that's different from when we were in the library. What are your three like favorite things? You've already got audio, so you really just need to.
Yeah, well, certainly, right now, my favorite thing is the audiobook section. I have used the breakout rooms on a number of occasions. I think that's a fantastic resource. In fact, my brother was interviewing for a new job and he had a big, long test to take. So we came and used one of your rooms and it was perfect. We set up his laptop and, you know, went through, it was a personality test. I wasn't helping him. Just there as, as a professional advisor or something. And then I would say the sitting areas I think are wonderful too. Near, you know, I have actually never sat near the stone wall back here, but that looks beautiful. And it just happened and I'm in that section all the time, but I'm so focused on the audiobooks that I didn't notice it, but that looks fabulous. I love the corner table by the window out, you know, looking overlooking the woods. So those, you know, just the open public spaces that are available, you know, really and truly, I think it's wonderful. And I did, in fact, in one of the recent notices, I did learn that you actually do rent space as well within the library to various organizations. So I thought that was again, another great resource.
Do you have any particular experiences that really motivated you to be involved in working on boards in the past and specifically this position?
Um, well, so it was really a large part of my professional position. So I, you know, it was just part of what I was required to do for my position. I did come to love the art of collaboration and working with various different people. And I just really do enjoy that kind of work. And this specifically, again, I just, I've always loved the library since I started going to the school library as a kindergartner. I just love the library, so.
Maybe you guys could help us out.
Sure.
Questions that you guys already asked, so that we know some of the Well, one of the things we ask people is, you know, if they have a library card. Um, but can you tell us a little bit more about the grant writing?
So, um, as I mentioned on the call, I do have a great deal of experience in grant writing, whatever. However, it's specific to federal grants that particularly most of my experience is on something called the U mechanism. And most often those are multimillion dollar grants. And I managed two of those over the course of my career at Wayne State. One was specific to establishing a network around cancer health disparities within the different organizations in the Detroit area. And that grew into a larger grant that allowed us to have two funded research project, projects as well as and that was another committee I worked with, by the way, a community. I manage both of those efforts. And then now I'm funded actually by an R twenty-one mechanism, which is a much smaller grant. And that is specific to a colorectal cancer screening intervention with African-Americans.
Very good. Thank you. Because I think I mentioned when we talked last week, that's something that we haven't done a lot of that I think is, that we're missing in our library today is really going after some grants. And I know I actually have a public administration background as well. Well, I went to school for it, but that's not what I but I did my internship, I worked in some brands. And I realized that it's, it can be a lot of work. I worked with a lot of township programs and it was, it was a tremendous amount of work. So I think that you know, we're not doing that today. And we've talked April about, we really also don't have a lot of staff that has that opportunity and that time to do that. So I think that's something that you would bring as positive to the board. Because even if those are federal grants, they would be I don't think it's gonna be that much different if we're going after public grants, you know, or state grants. And I know that we've got, there's some grants that we can go after that are that are just, you know, from commercial institutions, so.
Absolutely, yes. And just given the nature of being in that arena, the granting arena, there's a lot of learning that goes on just collectively across the board relative to grants and grant processing and grant reporting and budget reporting and all of those things. But, you know, when you're working with the federal government, it just gets that much more complex and kind of nasty, so.
Sure.
We also talked a little bit about the community outreach and the importance of engaging the the community, the organization, individuals and and such in there. Maybe you could tell us a little bit about your, where do you think you would fit in with that role of a trustee of reaching out to the community?
I would start with saying that I'm already a huge advocate for the library. I'm always suggesting this as a resource to anyone who's looking for space or looking for a place to study or looking for so many different resources. But so I'm, number one, I'm already a huge advocate for the library. The work I've done in the past, I think lends itself well to working in the public with various community members. And just to give you an example of what I've done on, in that vein, I worked most recently with a host of different cancer action councils. And that was actually representatives from various communities, just individuals who came together to focus on cancer health disparities and how better to make that how better to handle that rather in their own communities. So again, an example, we had one in Western Wayne, one up in Flint, and then one in Southfield. And then we had one at Access in Dearborn, you know, so we were hitting on a number of different communities, which that was really, really exciting work to me. But that's probably the most recent example I've had. So I have experience with lots of different groups and lots of different folks, so.
Thank you.
So, so the we talked about the commitment of the participating in meetings, doing prep work and participating in committees and such. And as, as I recall, that wasn't ever an issue for you. Is there any issue with it after thinking about it?
No, not at all. I actually would look very much forward to learning more about the library and, and again, being able to advocate in a sort of formal capacity.
Could you share some of your experience with strategic planning and budgeting with the various professional positions you have as well as board members?
Sure. So I mentioned the two big grants that I worked on. And while I was not part of the first grant, I was hired on after they received that money, but I was, I had a big hand in on the writing team for the second grant, which was a five million dollar five-year grant that actually ended up being seven years long, you know, with carry forward funds and with some phase out funding that they provided us. But I was a big part of planning, you know, which committees would monitor which, which pieces of the grant, which, which members would we recruit to be part of our research and advisory committees. So I was a huge part in the planning and then I had a big role in just in general event planning around those grant positions. So we often would do steering committee meetings, for example, and those were usually quite large, big, big effort, you know, that kind of thing. And then I was a big hand in actually helping to conduct, conduct the research. So I was working with research participants as well. So I was working in focus groups I was working in, you know, so I think that, again, I just feel like I have a good bit of experience in very different roles and very different you know, capacities. So, you know, I did a number of I moderated a number of focus groups, so I have that experience. So no one in the world is comfortable publicly speaking, right? But I feel like I have a fair bit of experience with it, you know, because I've presented both on the state stage as well as the national stage, but you know, I always get the cold hands.
So we are, we are going to kick off the new strategic plan. Commitment. And so that is something that we're looking for people to participate in. So so you've worked with focus groups before and facilitated us. So that would be something that you would be comfortable helping the board with.
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
As part of the strategic plan, you know, this is something that's been kind of pushed back you know, there was a pandemic and a whole bunch of other things happening. So, you know, and just breathing after the library getting built. So that was the strategic plan and now then it was reached. Is there anything that you think the library should be looking forward to as part of like a strategic plan? Is there anything? And it could be something that's already done, but you wouldn't know as the public that it's already like in the work. So what kind of things when you're around here, do you say, you know, I really wish the library put more emphasis on
That's a really tough question because I feel like you have programs that are across the board and available for all walks of life. And I just think it, the libraries are doing a beautiful job of that. But what I like in particular, and I'd love to see grow, is the idea of, of helping children and young not just an occasional or, you know, for a period of time type resource, because I think that's, you know, important for a public institution to have that lasting power.
For sure.
Okay. Okay. We've got eleven minutes left.
What have we not asked?
Cannot think of a thing I've been saying to my husband and son before I left. And like, I think I told them pretty much I'm not sure what else I have to say. So, no, I just, like I said, I would really welcome this new opportunity. And I just think it would be as I think you said on our call, you said it is fun. It can be fun. But I think it would be really interesting to learn more and to just be a part of this wonderful institution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, if we don't have any more questions. Is there anything else you want to say? Like, was that
I think I feel like I've shared everything I can possibly think of.
All right.
We really appreciate you coming.
Being part of the process.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. So Amy, do I have to stop in between people? Or is this just run open until the next person comes? I have to pause it and then I have to restart it again. Okay. Yeah, I was just, I wanted to make sure I understood the difference in the colors of checks and oh, I thought, oh, maybe April likes. Thank you. Maybe, maybe.
So I'm gonna have to reach out to Joe. Um, is that because I thought I made myself clear on what I wanted Joe to do. I like the PNC account. He came back and said something else and, and I thought, okay, well, I agree with that. So I'll reach out to him. Because it looks like he's going strictly with Flagstar. And the Flagstar checks are red.
That's what that, and that list is all Flagstar checks.
So this list is for just our reference. So here's what's going, did you get it? April, did they get a smart vault?
Yes.
You got a smart vault. You probably have it in your library email. There's a small, a smart vault ID for you.
Okay.
Okay. This is a file that Joe writes.
Okay.
All right. And Joe writes that against the P, against the Flagstar checks. Gets uploaded. Rich wrote us the macro Excel. Okay, Joe fills that out. He sends it to Smart Vault. April will pick it up. If April's not around, one of us will pick it up. We upload it to Flagstar. Then when those checks are written, those checks come in to be cached. Flagstar matches it against this positive pay file. If there's a check that comes through and it's not on that positive pay file, it gets rejected. We have like, what? A couple hours to respond to it.
Yeah.
We'll get an alert.
Oh, okay.
And we get an alert.
Is that with the toggle thing or no? No.
The toggle thing is for wire transfers.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll get an alert. So this is, these are the checks that were written. So you can see the check number.
Yeah.
Day. So the check numbers from here to here, which, yeah, that actually works, all right.
One of the first checks that we sent out got flagged because when it was scanned, they picked the number up wrong.
Oh, okay.
So it's it feels somewhat likely that we're gonna see more
more of those.
faults negatives.
We hope not too many. They seem to be surprised that they receive that, so.
They learn the virtue.
But that positive pay file then is really our fraud detection.
Okay.
Okay.
It gives you a little bit more. There's not too much data usually.
Do you want a water, Dustin? Okay.
You have any questions?
Where do people sign out the hotspots? Like at the front desk or?
They send out the adult references.
Okay.
Okay, so I, so I don't know, I guess. This invoice does not match for consumers, does that match our check? We know why. I have to double check.
It's an even number instead of the number.
It's no, is it? Significantly different. It could be that Joe noticed that it had been, maybe the past balance was previously paid. Is that what it's, is it for less than the amount on the consumers? Yes. Oh, okay, yeah. The accounts are ready. Last month's balance forward. So I'm assuming it was paid. Okay. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. April. I was talking with Amy and we think we should paint the hands on these clocks.
Oh, my gosh.
Like a dreamy color that'll go match with the wire. With like just a little sponge paint brush. I can never tell what time it was. Nate could do that.
We're kicking it out and being swishing out the one clock that's in the administrative office.
Yeah.
This one.
But I want to stick you guys with that. But I think if we just painted the, the hands, we could see them better.
A little radium thing. Very classic.
To find them. Yeah.
Oh, I just found it. Okay.
Yeah. And like the second hand's not moving on that clock. Or either clock. Is that a second hand? Okay, I thought there was a second hand. I thought there was a hand pointing towards the number two.
There is, that's Oh, no, it's not. It's not.
It's not.
Well, then where's the minute?
It's the, the hour hand's pointing at the eight.
No.
Yeah. And the minute hand's pointing at the seven.
No, no, minute. The hour is the hour is pointing at the seven. And the minute
Oh, and that's the end of the minute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was like, what's going on? I thought, well, that clock's wrong. Once I finally Yeah, and they're both wrong. But yeah, I think painting those would help. We've only been here three years almost, right? I don't think we can get new clocks because they were donated.
Oh, these were?
Nice. So the next best thing would make it readable. If they're here. Is Eric the second one? I didn't know. Tim's the second one? Okay. Yeah, Eric's last. Gotcha.
Yes.
Hello, Tim. Nice to meet you. There's the hot seat right there.
Already warm, I hope.
Okay.
How are you all?
You're fine.
Good to see you.
Let me, I'll just go through Jen. I was on I'm president. Rich is our vice president.
Good to see you.
Treasurer. Karen's our, one of our trustees and Jake is our new secretary.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, and you know.
Yes, we go way back.
Amy's running the cameras for all of our public meetings.
Even though you didn't put it together.
Yeah.
So I meant, actually, I want to, I want to air out one quick thing. I meant to come in here this weekend and get my library card. But year-end work kind of came out of nowhere. So, and being an accountant, it kind of, all of a sudden, thirty hours of my work week disappeared for the new guy. So then my reporting all got delayed. So God, I apologize. I meant to get that done prior to this.
Okay. Well, maybe you could tell the other board members a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, sure. So I guess, starting at the very beginning, I grew up in Walt Lake, or I guess Commerce, just the technical town that I grew up in. Went to Walt Lake School District. Graduated from Walt Lake Central, was a big performing arts person, big nerd. I think if you went to Central, you probably knew my first and last name. Because people like to call me by my first and last name. I type, so Tim Paul, right? It's very popular to say both for whatever reason. But so I grew up, went to school at Walt Lake Central, graduated from there, decided to pursue accounting and finance at Grand Valley State University, where I was a member of the Honors College, Frederick Myers Honors College. I studied urbanism, which was the study of how cities develop. As a, you take a like a, it's called a sequence when you go through the Honors College. And it is a way to get your, your core requirements in for education, but you do so in like a more relevant field of study and more like human field of study than just biology or textbook. And so we, urbanism was the study of cities. How they work, why they work, what they function, sort of what they do. And a big part of that was a research project into Grand Rapids proper as a case study. And so I got to sort of begin my college career sifting through old records in, in, in public libraries in different areas of Grand Rapids, trying to figure out, okay, what is retained here? What, how does this apply to the city? What is the history like? Because if you, and as an anecdote, if you've ever looked at the history of Grand Rapids, it's a very plastic city. What that means is it was one thing in the nineteen eighties and then all of a sudden two thousand came and it was completely different. Very cool to study. So that was my honor sequence that carried me through. Um, very cool to study. So that was my honor sequence. That carried me through, um, my stint at Grand Valley. I completed my four-year degree in three years, um, and graduated, moved back to White Lake. Pretty quickly moved in, moved out of my parents' house. I got bored of that. And I bought my own house in White Lake, uh, three years ago. And since have been floating around, trying to find of, figure out if I want to stay here, if I want to move, what do I want to do? And so that kind of gets me into my career. I've been, uh, an accountant since the day I graduated Grand Valley. Uh, I, my first real, uh, professional career was a accounts payable data entry specialist. Um, so I basically did coding for freight, uh, vendors and things along those lines for a building products company called Oral Building Products. They manufacture all kinds of stuff. Fly ash and siding are kind of their main things. Um, I was there for about a year and then I left for the automotive industry like everybody does in Michigan. I quickly found out automotive was not for me. Um, it, the work environment was a little too uh, buttoned up, uh, and it felt very archaic to me. Um, and I just felt very stagnant in that position. So I, uh, left and I found a pet products company that sells self-cleaning litter boxes, much more personable, much, uh, much more friendly, much less, um, we'll call it, uh, uh, in inefficiencies, because I found that there were a lot of inefficiencies, uh, that were calculated in, um, in automotive, but they weren't, the inefficiencies at least aren't calculated in my new gig, right? They're surprised us. So that's nice. Uh, I get to do a little bit of problem solving there. That's very cool. So yeah, that's kind of a timeline. Uh, and, uh, as a, in my free time, I attend. I, I've been a musician, like I said, so I play a lot of bass. Uh, I am a, um, I do play the jazz coffin, the upright one and the electric one. Um, I sing for fun. And, um, I also am a, uh, a, well, I think, I guess I also sing professionally. Because I am a member of the choir at Meadowbrook Congregational Church. That's where I sing. Uh, so catch me there on Sunday mornings at ten AM.
Well, we catch rich here in town.
Oh, okay, cool. Sorry. I don't mean to steal your thunder. I won't take the, if you ever need a bass player, let me know. I'm, I'm, I'm looking, so. I'll even play the tambourine if you need. Uh, I just like to participate. Um, so yeah, I guess that's, that's pretty much me from start to current. Um, do you guys have any other questions? Is there anything I missed? Anything you'd like to?
So tell us a little bit about you and, and the, uh, and the library. Where, how do you see yourself fitting into the library board?
Um, so I actually think I want to answer that question two different ways. So where do I see myself fitting in with the library board? Um, is I see myself being a, uh, almost a reputationless, um, uh, arbiter board member. I see the board as an oversight function and that, and that, and that alone. Um, and so I think that as a member of the board, I will do my best to make sure that the community is being served by April and her staff. Um, and that, I think is the place of the, the board of directors. And my place within it is to be one of the, one, two, three, four, five, six heads that, um, would be, uh, basically making sure that everything's above board. And if anybody comes with a complaint or comes with a, with a grievance or comes with a compliment, that that gets fielded, listened to and addressed. And I would be one of the six people that would facilitate that. Another place where I see myself, um, and where I'd like to insert myself um, is into the finance aspects of the library. Um, I am a very, um, numbers-focused person, I'm a very quantitative, uh, person. I, I really find that, uh, in, as piles of money get larger behind things, money really tends to be spent inefficiently. I used that word a little bit earlier. I'm gonna use it again, because it's it, it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of brain power, a lot of planning to make sure that every cent is spent in a way that is bettering the, the cause, bettering the effort, the community, the library. So, um, I sort of see myself as an audit, uh, type of, type of role in that respect. And then the second part of that, uh, question that I kind of want to address is, is more of a why the library board. Um, because, uh, I, I see myself, uh, as a, as a library board member. Not because I want to participate in local governance. And I don't, and I don't want to go, somebody, I had a friend say to me, that's a stepping stone for mayor. And I said, I really couldn't care less. I, I, I really couldn't care less because I think that my place on the board is to make sure that there is a functional library for the community. I don't, the, why the library? I have a very big passion for reading. I have a passion for the defense, protection of knowledge. Um, and I think that that passion would be best served via the library board. So, does that?
Yeah.
It's cool, perfect.
Could you share some of your experience, um, with your Men's Music Fraternity as president and treasurer?
Yeah. So I started as treasurer. Um, or I guess I started as general member and then quickly being the only finance and accounting guy in the fraternity, they were like, Tim, we'll be, you should be the treasurer. Um, so I, I was elected treasurer and I, uh, they had to suspend the bylaws in order to put me in, right? We had to have this whole meeting because I was a new guy and I hadn't quite met the office requirements. Um, so I took, uh, a Men's Music Fraternity. I, I, I was the only business mind. You can say it that way, to have actually have looked at the books of this chapter. Um, and when I first got there, there was not a lot of fundraising efforts. There was not a lot of good bookkeeping in general. Um, and money wasn't really spent. It was a lot of this, we'll collect dues and our goal is to have sixty dollar dues. We're not going to budget anything. We're not going to do any of this. Cheap, effective fraternity. To which I said, we can't do that. So I established a budgetary process for each semester. And I said, this is what dues are going to be. This is what we want to do. You have to tell me that you want this money in the budget if you want to do this. If it's not in the budget ahead of time, we're gonna have problems. So I established a budgetary process. I also headed up the only successful fundraiser, uh, that we've ever, in my now participated in. We ran Pizza Kits, which was, uh, if you're familiar, Little Caesar's Pizza Kits, yeah. Yeah, it's an easy sell. Um, and, uh, we, I created all these incentives and, 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 uh, we elected a pizza king and he was the guy that sold the most things. He got his dues paid for, blah, 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 blah. And as far as I know, they still follow all of those practices. Um, and I don't, I don't think the Pizza Kits fundraiser is still going out. Uh, but as far as I know, they still follow the budgetary principles. Everybody was mad at me because I raised dues, but they got T-shirts and stuff out of it. So they, they seemed to be okay with it. Um, and, uh, so treasurer was pretty straightforward. Um, and then president was a real shock because, um, leading up to president, the we want you to be president. To which I said, no, I've had enough of you guys. You, uh, being the treasurer, I've had enough. You guys don't pay your dues on time. You don't do this. You don't do that. Twelve dudes to show up at an old folks home to sing for the people. That's crazy to me, it being an immense music fraternity. And they said, okay, and then nominated me. And then I said, well, okay, I can't say no to the nomination. And then I won unopposed. And I said, okay, well, I guess I gotta be president of the fraternity. To which, uh, I took over, we got through citations, which is basically like a year-end audit. Um, and I pulled these guys, and I use the word pulled. I pulled these guys through the, what I would call the last solid year of the fraternity. Um, if you're familiar with the concept of, in, in Roman history of, of running, of, of walking down the steps in satin slippers at the very end, the procession of the Roman Republic, that's kind of what I oversaw. Um, the fraternity ran as it should. We did our M M Ms and our service requirements and our citations were super clean. Everybody participated begrudgingly. Uh, we had really effective E-board that took good minutes. I made people read the minutes. I got a lot of chapter engagement. And then sadly, uh, during the following election cycle, they said, uh, they said, Tim, we don't want your input. The next president, and they elected somebody who I told them, or the few people that were in my circle, I said, this guy's not, he's, he's after it. He's not gonna do a good job. He's gonna get in, he's gonna do a couple of things and then he's gonna leave. And they elected him and he did it. And then the chapter kind of fell apart. Now it's starting to come back together. Um, but yeah, I like to kind of hang my hat on the fact that I. Yes, uh, yeah.
And you expected more.
Yeah, so I know, being the business major in the, in the group of music majors, I know I expected too much. But the whole idea of the fraternity is that we're manly men, we're, we're manly musicians and musicianly men. And the whole idea is that you're, you go and be a good human, not because it's the easy thing to do, but because it's the right thing to do. And so, um, I managed to instill that in most of them. At least they faked it in my presence, which I call a victory. Um, but yeah, so that's kind of the run-through of the fraternity history. Um, I really enjoyed it. I kind of begrudgingly took the leadership position and I really fell into it and I, 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 I liked it. Um, I thought I did a very good job. We had a lot, um, I actually can speak to some uh, kind of turmoil that we had. We had a Title IX investigation, which, ooh, spooky Title IX college campus. Um, it is. Uh, we had a gentleman who was a probationary member get into a, um, some kind of spat with a, with a girl in an off-campus, off-campus apartment. And I was called in by the Title IX office and they said, hey, are you associated with this person? And I said, yep, he actually didn't make it through our probationary process, this, that and the other thing. And I had two or three meetings where I had to meet with the Title IX officials of the school and, and say, this is our fraternity. This is what we do. This was his involvement. This, and I went through the whole investigation. Um, I don't actually know what happened with him specifically. I kind of, as soon as we were absolved of any tie to it, I kind of, uh, let it lie. Um, because I figured less fire is a good thing. But so, yeah, we've dealt, I've dealt with adversity in that respect, um, in, in that, in that position. And then, uh, there were, there were also a handful of members that we had to kind of, uh, discipline, for lack of a better term, because they weren't upholding, uh, the values, um, that were set forth in our, in our object and stuff like that. Um, and so we just kind of, we had to, it was, uh, discipline is the wrong, it's the business word for training. We had to train him and basically say, this is, this is what was told to us. We would like you to defend it. This is the story. Please tell us why you did it. And then, do you think that that is something a symphonian would do? And we had to brought him in front of the chapter and did the whole nine and, um, he turned his act around and it was a good, it was a good, it was good. Um, it took him a second. His name was also Tim. Missed that guy. Uh, anyway, um, yeah, so that's kind of, and I guess it's two anecdotes as to a little bit of history and the fraternity itself. Um, I really liked, uh, being part of that organization. I was, I actually almost stayed for a fourth year to get a bunch of extra credits to be the president. Um, and then I said, twenty grand for the president of fraternity. I can't. I love you guys, but I can't. So does that answer your question?
It does.
Cool.
What of the library resources? Which ones of those do you think are like the most important or just the ones that you use the most?
Um.
Doesn't have to be important to anybody but you, actually.
Yeah, uh. Here, one of the coolest things, um, and one of the things that I'm gonna, that I would push for as a board member is the Library of Things concept that you guys had brought up, uh, that was brought up in the last interview, the, particularly the 3D printer. I'm a, I'm a huge Bashing for books. I think books, personally to me, books are the most important thing in the library. Go to library because you need to research stuff. Um, and that stuff is held in books. Um, I, so that's personally the most important part, but I think that the most important part moving forward of the library is going to be what the library provides to people. And particularly with something like a 3D printer, a 3D printer is going to be a crazy expensive four hundred dollar investment that the average bear isn't gonna make. And they're also not gonna take the time to figure it out if they have to pay four hundred. Like, there's a whole bunch of bill involved. The library has it. There's a barrier. There's a, there's a lower barrier to entry. There's somebody in the library who can teach you how to use it. That kind of thing. So I think so to adjust my answer a little bit, I think that the most important thing at the library is the information that is held within it. It's the, it's the resource of the library itself. Uh, it's the utility that the library provides. Because without it, and I think I use this in my, uh, in my Zoom interview, but without it, we would have, uh, we would have nothing. And I'd look at, then look at something historically like the Library of Alexandria, where that was gone. And what did we lose? What technology is now never going to exist? That is gone, like, what, like, what is that? And that was housed there and people got rid of it. So I think that's the most important thing that the library has. Uh, that's kind of a component to it. It's, it's not necessarily the aspect, it's, it's the amalgamation of everything. Books, I guess, would be my personal answer. But knowledge itself, the, the actual utility it provides.
One of the things the library board is planning to do in the very near future is establish a strategic planning committee and reviewing a strategic plan for the library moving forward in the next five years. Could you share some experience you've had with, whether it's professional or with an extra regular room? Um, where you served in some type of strategic planning role?
Yeah, um, so I'll use a bit of a personal anecdote, uh, here. Um, and then I'll, I'll show a professional one as well. Uh, but personally, I guess this is semi-professionally. I do a little bit of consulting work for a friend of mine. He runs Clear Cut Ice Sculptures. If you've ever heard of him, he's a ice carver, um, out of Commerce Township. And, uh, he, during the pandemic, business got really bad. Um, and he came to me and he said, Tim, uh, I'm really struggling with my business. And I said, okay, Clinton, I'm gonna help you get your business off the ground. Uh, I'm gonna help you get things, because he was buried by COVID, uh, being a, 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 a person who gets their revenue when people gather. People were gathering, hard to sell ice sculptures. So, um, I brought him in and I said, okay, Clinton, we need to start establishing six-month rolling goals. And with a, with a year-long overarching goal for where you want to be and what you want your life to look like. What do you want clear cut ice to look like? Um, and so we talked and talked and eventually, I, I, I can proudly report that after a year and a half, because I started last July, a year and a half, I've tripled his, um, incoming revenue. And I've gotten him to, uh, hire two people and, and create value in their lives as well. Um, and so we've been able to see a very one-to-one. I got him on a, I got him rolled up to speed and then I said, okay, here's where you are, here's what you don't have, here's where you need to be. You need a ERP system, you need a way to take credit card payments. You need to invest in X, Y, and Z for your people. You need to invest in X, Y, and Z for this. And now that we've kind of reached a soft point, uh, about soft victory point about six months ago, um, I said to him, okay, you need to figure out what the next steps are. Uh, you need to figure out, we've kind of started to address, okay, do you want to buy a house? Do you want to buy a new building? What do you want to do? And so, um, I tend to work in terms of strategic planning in chunks. Um, and he, we've been able to finish a chunk and add another chunk and then finish that chunk and add another chunk. And so it's a kind of a rolling fashion. It's not the quite five-year timeline that you, you discussed earlier. But, uh, in my current role, I've actually spent the past four months or so, uh, doing budgeting for the company that I work for, uh, Litter Robot or Whisper. Um, and it's a annual revenue of two hundred and fifty million dollars. Um, so we've been actually figuring out where the product launches are going to be, what timeline we want them, where we want them to exist, uh, how we want to sort of plan our, our capital expenditure budgets accordingly. Um, and that's actually been a huge eye-opening experience for me. Um, because I've gotten to see, it's a big strategic plan. Um, and I get to sit in on meetings where it's, it's, I'm not totally familiar with the actual end-to-end. Uh, we're launching the wet food feeder. I don't know what all of the details are, but I'm kind of learning that, okay, here's the timeline and they're filling in the details here. So I don't exactly have one-to-one strategic planning experience in the big, like five-year overarching plan. Um, but I'm getting a lot of exposure to that in my current role, which is super cool. And I guess one more like fun, uh, forecasting, uh, uh, story is I developed an app in college with a couple of friends. We developed a social meeting app that thinking about it now was like a flawed concept from the beginning. Um, essentially what it would, what it was you two, us to sit in the same room together. There's technology on your phone that'll be able to tell that my phone is in my pocket, your phone is in your pocket. And we can map all that via like geomagnetic something or another. Um, I'm the numbers guy, not the tech guy. Um, and, uh, it would be, we would basically make a floor plan, you'd be able to chat and monetize and so on and so forth. My job was actually to monetize. It would be, we would basically make a floor plan, you'd be able to chat and monetize and so on and so forth. My job was actually the monetization of that. So I developed a five year plan for launching this uh app. And we got to a minimal product value. We got to the five thousand dollar. We did a couple of uh the consumer shows. And then I cut ties with the, with the owner because he was starting to ask way too much, but I did develop a three year strategic plan. Um, that I think would have developed, would have been good fruition, but this was like when I was a freshman in college. It wasn't great, but it was better than nothing. Um, it was certainly better than what he would have put together. So um, there's that. So, yeah, I have some uh planning, not a, not a ton of like very far planning, I guess, to button that up.
So, uh, we have a few minutes left here. One of the things you said during the interview that I thought uh was good. I, I, it was good to hear is that you kind of wrapped up with, I wanna do something good with my time. And that you thought the library would be something like that. Do you wanna talk about that? Just there's our timer there. That's your three minute warning. Do you just wanna tell the other people that weren't here at that interview?
Yeah, sure.
You meant by that, cause I thought that was a good point.
Yeah, so I found, as I've lived here for just over three years, I've lived at home, it's, it's become clear to me. That I need to begin to fill my time with things that are good, because I'm beginning to run out of things that are good to fill my time. Um, and the library, I think the exact quote that I said was the library is something good. That I can put my time into. Um, and 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 I guess one other thing I wanna add to that, and I kind of mentioned this earlier. Um, is that I I wanted to make it really clear in my application that I'm not after like. The the success, the the, this like, this narcissistic politic approach, right? I really think that's a bunch of gobbledygook and garbage. And so I'm very, very much so. Into this because it's an opportunity for me to develop the community in which I live. And if I'm going to live here, I have to do good things while I'm here. And the library seems like the best avenue to do good things. So, yeah, it's, it's, it was, it came like as a uh epiphany or whatever. Um, but it was, I, I am, I said to my dad, I'm running out of good things to spend my money on. And then I thought about it and I said, oh, I'm running out of good stuff to do. That's what I said to my dad. That's what I, that's I thought about, like, oh, I'm running out of good stuff to do. So I need to find good stuff to do. Otherwise, I'm just gonna start doing bad stuff. So um, the um, in the library is the outlook for good stuff. So.
Yeah, I, I, that stuck with me. I just.
Cool.
Well, I'm giving you a chance to.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
So.
Questions you have for us?
Um. What do, do you guys, uh, okay, what do you guys see as a potential weakness in my candidacy? And can I address it?
I don't know if you have a weakness because you're one of the top three.
You don't have a library card.
You know, I led with that. I thought, I thought we addressed this.
Um, you don't have a library card.
Okay.
You gotta spend a lot of time in the library.
Acceptable, yeah.
And so, um, you know, we're getting ready to do the strategic plan and it's important that the people that participate on that plan. Um, look at what we have today and where we can. In in um, where we can take the library in the future, in the next, you know. When, when we do this plan, it's gonna be a five to ten year plan. So where do we wanna be in five to ten years, right? So you have to have some kind of knowledge of where we're at today.
Yep.
To where we're gonna, where we're gonna go in the future.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay. I, I'd like to say I'm a quick learner. Um, and I know that everybody says that. Um, but. I, I'm, I'm hungry enough for this opportunity that I, I don't think that that's a problem. I'll learn. I'll figure it out. So, don't, uh, I understand, but I don't think that that's uh.
Other people that probably have come into this. You know, I'm.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not a pressure and I can tell you, I know nothing about being a pressure for the White Lake Township Library before I. I've been before I drug aboard.
Yeah, well, that's also part of the reason why I'm doing this, is so that I can learn more about my community. Cause the other, the other edge of that sword is, okay, well, I don't know a lot about White Lake and I've lived here for three years. Well, let's not count my youth too. That's, I've lived next door for so long, but yeah, so.
I think we have a lot more diverse community, um, than people realize that we do. You know, people look at just, you know, okay, my, this is my neighborhood. So this is what most of the people in my community are like. It's really not the case. Um, we have a, a very just diverse community in, um. Um, what I wanna say, in. Like we, I know we have a large community of people that don't actually have internet access. And they don't, and a lot of people just assume that we do. And we have a large community that does not. So one of the things that we do here at the library is we actually have Wi-Fi that is free out through the entire parking lot.
Oh.
Um, so, uh, yes, and so, you know, this is a good place to come for people that want to um do job interviews. And, you know, if they don't have, they're gonna do a job interview and they need Zoom or whatever, um, they can actually come and, you know, sit in one of our.
I was gonna say, I saw the study room.
But they can also use our computers as well, right?
Cool.
Um, you know, the application, I mean, we have people that come in here just to actually go online and pay their taxes. You know, and actually.
Right, yeah, I, that's.
Because they just don't have the opportunity to have them come home. So, um, you know, we, I think we have a lot that we can offer this community to help the impoverished. Of our community, and I think there's a lot of people that don't realize that they're there with us.
Yeah, and if we could spend library money on making people's lives better, I don't see any issue. Yeah, that's, yeah, let's do it. I'm here. Let's do it. I love it. Cool.
All right, we're kinda out of time now.
All right, well, I'm sorry for chatting you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
I look forward to hearing from you guys and I hope that you don't burn any more midnight oil.
It'll be good.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Nice seeing you.
I will.
So I'm assuming I'm the customer.
Yes.
It's asking me to list the sign, uh, the other signers on here, but it doesn't really give me a place to put them. It says. Please list all authorized signers on this account and please list any additional accounts not listed. It's just something for a flag star. I can take it up there and ask them.
It's uh, it's from the, the order.
So do I need to list the other signers?
Which would be Rich, right?
Yeah, yes, is that what I, but it doesn't really say where.
Yeah.
Just like anywhere.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't wanna mess it up.
So we have a few more minutes before we have Eric. Is that correct? What times?
He's at quarter to, so yeah.
This has been a good, a good process. So did you guys interview all of you?
We did. And I was, I was. At, I was at work. I was on my way to Virginia. I was in the hotel room in Virginia. I was in the parking lot during one of them, boo, and like the guy in the car next, parked next to me and then. Checked in and then came back out to his car and he was sitting in his car the whole time and I'm like, this is just weird.
This is a little strange. You were at the doctor's with you, with your mother.
I was at the doctor with my mom.
Oh, wow.
I mean, my whole, my whole week just fell apart.
And I was at my father's.
She was in Wisconsin.
That's the joy of Zoom.
And April was not feeling well.
Yes, she was very under the. Yeah, it made it very difficult for me to be at my father's and try to find a place and, you know, I'm closing the door and telling my husband, don't let the dog up here. Oh, yeah, and then let the dog, the dogs wander. You did? Oh, my. Well, when I was reading all the things, you know, the original.
When do you wanna be Gwendolyn or Gwen?
Gwendolyn. Anything that's, yeah, anything that's.
G E, G W E N D O L one?
Oh, I didn't wear my name.
I didn't wear mine either. I never remember. The Newton is just like a big Newton.
N E W T one.
Or Sir Isaac, I should, that would be a much better, uh.
Well, if I tell people likely cookies, they don't have a star. Are we ready? Jen?
Yeah.
Man of the President. We didn't have a list of questions.
Hi, Eric. Yeah, you can have any, you know, the bottle of water right there.
Thank you. So you must be Jake.
Yes.
Okay.
Jake's our secretary. Karen's one of our trustee members. And this was Gwen. You saw Gwen. And you met Rich and then I was on the calls, but I don't know if I.
Well, I shake all your hands, COVID and everything else.
Yeah.
So, how's everyone doing? Good. I'm doing well. So just catching, catching up on reading.
Good. Did you make your goal?
I did. I hit my goal last year. Hit seventy-five. I, I sent it a little lower this year, cause I've got a few other things going on at work, so.
I set mine at ten and see who I.
You know, you send it at one is, as long as you're reading, right?
So you feel like you're a high achiever.
Uh, yeah.
I saw one, one of my friends that's a librarian in the Cleveland area had three hundred. And, uh, but she's not working currently, so she's, you know, that's, she's made that her job. Yeah, so. But, uh, yeah, I figured seventy-five was a pretty good number, so.
Do you have any particular genres or interests?
Sci-fi, yeah, for sure, sci-fi. So I was just browsing some of the stacks out there, seeing what you had and what you didn't, so.
So Eric, we've, the three of us talked to you last week, cause you know, we had a pretty good conversation and maybe, um, Jake and Karen a little bit more about yourself.
Sure. Okay, okay, I can start at the beginning. Um, I've lived in Oakland County most of my life. Um, I've lived in White Lake since two thousand and five. Uh, I live off Cedar Island Road, so uh, basically Cedar Island and Bogu Lake Road, the, the cross, cross streets that are there. Um, prior to my current position, I, I currently work for Desire to Learn or D two L, which is a learning management platform. Uh, we do uh platforms for college students, it's like Moodle or Blackboard or any of those other platforms, if you're familiar with those. Uh, but for six years prior to that, I worked for Ingram Library Services. So I was a book rep, a vendor. Uh, selling books to public libraries and services, collection services, all of that. So. Um, I got into that position uh out of a higher ed role that I was in before. I sold uh books for publishers, major publishing houses. Including Cengage Learning, Thomson Learning, uh, everybody except McGraw Hill, I think, so Pearson, all the big names. Um, and I did that for about thirty years before I got into the library space. And I really got into the library space because I felt like. To, to, and I'm not trying to mock what I did before, but I said all my life to my wife, I said, I have sold things. And I felt like I was selling things to people and I wanna do something that actually helps people. I wanna do something that enhances the community, helps the community get better. And the best way that I can think of to do that is to work in the library market, where, you know, I can help people. Develop a love of reading if they don't already have one and promote the use of public libraries if they don't have one. So they, if they haven't used it before, you know, try and encourage them to get to it. And, and be involved more with libraries in general. I mean, books were a big part of my life growing up and, and books are certainly a, a part of what I love right now. But at the same time, I also realize libraries are community centers. Um, so in my role at Ingram, I got to visit a lot of public libraries. I mean, a lot, probably upwards of, I'm guessing probably upwards of four hundred. Over the time that I was there and I called them a lot of the ones. I, I covered Ohio, uh, Michigan, Indiana and West Virginia. Didn't go to West Virginia much, but I went to Ohio quite a great deal, as you can imagine. Um, so I got to see a lot of what constitutes good libraries and I got to see a fair amount of what libraries are not so good. Um, and, and I really felt like with the, the White Lake Library, since it's my hometown library. Um, this would be a, a good place to actually be able to contribute some of that back to the community here. And uh, so when the position became available for this, I was very interested. So I came by and visited and was with Amy and then dropped things off uh with April, uh, my packet of information, so, um. I'm married, I have three kids. All of them are either in college or out of college by now. Uh, one goes to Oakland University, the other two went to Oakland U. Um, like I said, I've lived here since two thousand and five and uh, I, I really love the community.
So all your kids are OU alumni?
They are, they are. Well, and in fact, there's a building on the Oakland University campus named for my grandfather. So, it's the Shotwell Gustafson Pavilion.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. There, there also was at one point, my grandfather, um, started the Shotwell, at the time it was called the Shotwell Park for the handicapped. And it was off Telegraph Road, uh, and it had facilities for children that had either, whatever disability they may have had. So they had um accessible swing sets and accessible playground equipment. Yeah, yeah, so, which is now, since it's gone kind of defunct, I think it's gone back to the city. But uh, yeah, the Shotwell Gustafson Pavilion was my grandfather, so. Yeah, he donated, he donated money to the, and that had really nothing to do, we find out much later with the tax implications, that really had nothing to do with. My kids going there because we didn't benefit at all from that. But, but from time to time, a professor will stop one of them and say, are you related to? They're related to, so it's kind of a neat legacy.
So your family's from the county and community?
Yeah, my, my grandfather uh ran Hubert Distributors, which was the beer distributorship. Yeah.
I kept saying to a couple of people I know, how do I know this person's name? Because, um, I know Alice.
Okay, yes, Alice Gustafson, yeah. So, yep, um, my, my grandfather was Alice's husband. Um, and was, he was chairman of the board there at Hubert Distributors, the beer distributorship, uh, for most of my growing up years, so. Yeah.
Okay, so that fits together, cause it was really bothering.
Yeah, well, and my, my father sold real estate in the Waterford area, so he sold for Century Twenty-One, so his name was all over the place. Yeah. Yeah, he was the number one salesperson for a number of years, so.
Century Twenty-One or?
Uh, O'Neill, uh, was the one, was the one that they closed down some time ago. Uh, Cass and Elizabeth.
Yeah.
Or Cass and Pontiac, Cass and Pontiac, like, so, yeah, yeah, so kind of a family legacy in the area. And in fact, my, not to get too deep into genealogy, that's one of my other loves though, is genealogy. Um, the Oxbow area is where my great grandfather actually uh started his family, so, and he had twenty-six children.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, it's kind of a fun story. So two, two, two with his first wife, four with his second wife and nineteen with his third. Yeah, yeah, so genealogy is a, is a sort of a passion of mine too, because there's obviously a lot of things to trace back when you go that far back. So, so that's kind of like an overview of, of like my career side of it, my family side of it. What else can I tell you? What else would you like to know?
Do you have a library?
I do. I do, absolutely. I, I. To, to my, to my secret shame, this is one thing I'll admit in front of the group, and obviously it's in public TV, once it's on, on YouTube. Uh, I have a library card here. I have not used it quite as often as I've used my other library cards. Because I also, as a member of Ingram staff, I had a Nashville Public Library card and I still do. Uh, and I have a Kiowa County Public Library card out of the courtesy of them, so. But what's interesting is that Download Destination has, in some cases, it, it's, it's a good and a bad thing. It's like a blessing and a curse. Some titles that I want are available through Download Destination that aren't available through those other library systems. So, like the book Babbel, which is a best seller right now, uh, Download Destination had it, but the other two libraries are fourteen to sixteen weeks. So, but like I said, it's a blessing and a curse. It means that they're, they've got more popularity for that book within their patron range, so.
That is true.
You know, so you have to look at it kind of both ways. Is it a good thing? Sure, it's a good thing, but it's same, it's good for me. But at the same time, it means that, that uh other library patrons may not even be aware of the book.
Yeah.
And other books like it, so. Um, so my, my main goal in, in wanting to become a member of the board was really to help evangelize and advocate for the library. Uh, get more people in the area to use it. Um, I was telling April back when, when the uh election was up and the new bill. We all voted for it. My family, my, my oldest daughter was still living at home and was able to vote and my wife and I were both able to vote. And as you know, it passed by three votes. And so I tell people, don't ever let your, let anyone tell you that your vote in a local election doesn't count. Cause it absolutely does. Um, so I can't say we made the difference, cause there's obviously, you know, some thousands of other voters that were there too. But I, I like to be, uh, think that it's something to be proud of, that you're able to actually, you know, make the library more successful by being a part of it, being.
My, my son was away, had you around. My son was away at New Haven and my husband drove from Dearborn to Ann Arbor, picked him up, drove him up here, made him go. And then I drove him home.
Oh, that's good. Yeah.
I'm like, you are going.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, for this, for this area, really, I mean, there's certainly there's important elections.
Obviously before I was on the board, right? But, um, having a new library was very important to me.
Yeah.
I, my kids tripped over themselves over and over again in the older library.
Yeah.
We just needed so much more space.
Yeah, I I think, and not and not to diminish the other measures that were on the ballot, but I think for this community in particular, that was probably the most. Impactful election that we could have had and it was really close. So I I also spent quite a bit of time on Facebook yelling at people, what, why we needed a library and why, why we needed a new library and and why that money was well spent. You know, we consider the amount of money that's spent on the library compared to other facilities. It's pennies per person really for what you get out of it. You know, so. And so obviously with with my career and with my personal interests, I've been, I've been a big advocate of public libraries for a long time. So. What else can I tell you?
So you mentioned in your professional career, you've supported four hundred libraries.
Probably, yeah.
What would you say are the strengths that all of the best libraries you've been have?
Uh, it to some degree, good marketing is a part of it. I think marketing is a big piece, but at the same time, I think it's. It's passionate staff and it's a passionate board. I think that you can't really have a good library without both of those things. Um, the other thing that I would say is their facilities, even if even the smallest libraries that had really kind of old dated facilities. If they had people that were in charge of the collections that were really, uh, positive outlook, optimistic outlook on things and were actively buying materials. Uh, with whatever budget money they had, whether it was a small budget or a large budget, I think keeping the collection fresh is a big part of keeping people interested. Even if they're at the library for other things, even if they're coming for the community events and the children's events and that sort of thing. A a fresh collection to some degree is an important thing for for those those libraries that are out there. Um, there are some, they're beautiful buildings and they just don't do anything with them. I think the other, I guess the other characteristic I would say of successful libraries is that they have an active suite of programs that they're offering. You know, in a variety of different age groups and different disciplines and things like that. So whether it's, you know, bringing people in for game night. Or it's, or it's actually having things like the seed library or the library of things that bring people in. Um, I think those are are really indicative of it. And for me, not even thinking about the the book side of things. Uh, when I walked into a library the first time in my professional career as a, as a library vendor, one of the first things I noticed was the Maker Space. And then I also noticed the library of things that they had. They had a, this was a library in, I'm trying to remember where it was, in Middletown, Ohio. And they had the first seed bank that I'd ever seen. And I thought that is really cool. And so I think being able to see things that are sort of maybe not cutting edge, but maybe a little more cutting edge than, you know, the norm. And having those things in your programs, uh, is important too, because it gets people interested that might not otherwise be. You know, I think if people think of a library as just a place to store books, that's a problem. I think if if you look at the other side of it, on the unsuccessful library side. Um, what I would say the characteristic of most of them was, is that they had at least one person on staff. Who saw the collection as a repository of knowledge that they didn't want to clean out and didn't want to get rid of and didn't want to keep updated. So you had the archivists, you know, and the the archivist mentality. Not that that's a bad thing. You can certainly have that on the staff, but if they're in charge of making large amount of decisions for the collection. That's probably not going to keep the collection particularly fresh and you're going to run out of space really quickly. For sure. And and I guess one of the things I really love about this library is, it you hear as a complaint on Facebook, you know, it's got, there's so much unused space. I think that's a benefit. I think not only does it allow you to be more nimble with what you can offer for programs, but at the same time, you don't feel cramped, you don't feel crowded, you don't feel like it is dated. You know, it seems more fresh because it's more open. So. Sorry, did that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Um, so we're going to be working on our strategic plan coming up. So it's, you know, five, ten year. Where do you see the library in the next five to ten years?
Yeah, I I think to some degree, and certainly I'm not able to forecast. If I could predict the future, I I'd have a lot of money right now and I don't, and I don't. Uh, but I think that with the location that you're at right now, it sort of does seem to be the center of the community, at least geographically. And I could see that there's a lot of facilities that could go nearby along with parkland and everything else to really make this sort of the hub for White Lake. I could, I could see that in in my vision of what I would, what I would see as. Being good about this area. Um, I think there are infrastructure pieces in all of White Lake that are lacking. Like I live on a, on a road that's a dirt road and it has no sidewalks. That's sort of a problem. Um, I think, so I think that having things that feel like you can either walk there or drive there are great. So if there's more. Just like with Novi or or Northville for that matter, where there are things nearby. I think right now you're a little bit of an island out on your own because of where you're at geographically and that nothing's going in on either side of you. And there's just the farmer's market. Corner that's there and and the Kroger. Um. I I could see that being built up a lot more. I mean, I remember when I was a kid and I grew up in Waterford and used to drive out to Heartland and we think, oh, there's nothing out here. There's never going to be anything. Never going to be anything but farmland out here. And then there, then the target went and, you know. So it's changed a lot and I could see that being the case here too. I mean, there there is, obviously there's a push towards not overdeveloping land.
There, uh, right next to here is this side that's going to be the multi-tenant.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's. So we could potentially be watching.
Right.
That'd be awesome.
I think it's.
I don't remember how many units.
I think, I think when you look at like Novi as an example, not that they're necessarily an example in in other things, but to have the different facilities next door to it, it. Automatically increases some of that traffic, whereas right now, pretty much everyone that comes here is driving here. You know, few people might bike, but mostly not. Yeah, I I have, I haven't tried it myself, but I know, I know, just going down Bogey Lake Road, I can't, I can't get down Bogey Lake Road.
Somebody decides to use the money that we, you know, paid in taxes about, um, what, fourteen, fifteen years ago?
Yeah.
Or or, um, for bad ways for biking.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's what I would like to think, you know, I mean.
I'm still waiting for those.
Yeah, you know, may, and maybe that's a bit of a utopian vision, but I think you you want to have that. You want to have an, an uplifting kind of point of view on these things. I I've seen libraries where they had a, you know, they they were in neighborhoods where I was walking near road, but that's all they got was walking traffic. So like the, uh. Training the library in Ohio, Northern Ohio, um, not Lakewood, it's a bigger one, smaller library that I I used to call on. I can't remember the name of it off the top of my head, but it was in a neighborhood. And all the traffic that they got there was walking. And that also was not good because it just ended up becoming a neighborhood library more than really a community library. So people that were six, eight blocks away just didn't go. So I I think there's a chance with where it's located and all the things that are going in around it and the new businesses and things that might be popping up. I think that's an advantage. So. As as far as the facility, I I can see that. Hopefully you keep the same kinds of open space, but that doesn't change because I think that crowding the library too much makes it a problem. I I think things are looking like they're on the right track for that vision that I would see where, you know, more people can come in and more people can be patrons at the library, active patrons. Without a lot of changes to the fiscal structure here.
Yeah, we're hoping, you know, people start using more of the the patios.
I actually, I I saw that this summer when I was dropping off some books for the the friends group for a donation and I thought, you know, I should come up here, just bring my laptop during the day and just hang out in the patio.
Wifi throughout the whole.
Right, right. Yeah, and I know it was extended not long ago, right, where you can get further, I think you can get further out.
The friends were so generous and, um, they, um, donated money for us to have all new, um, tables.
Okay.
And umbrellas.
Yeah, it's a, it's a beautiful area. I mean, so.
All three of them with patio, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they get them all.
Yes.
Yes, I have a very, very great friends group.
Oh, no, I know. I've I've met a few of them and I I've talked to a few of them and I've donated when I've been at the book sales and that sort of thing. So. They all seem really passionate about, about being part of the friends group. So, and I I think it's great too that you also have the donations available anytime. Um, some friends groups I see like the, well, Indianapolis Public Library, which is obviously multi, multi-campus environment. Um, they would only allow donations on certain days and then they wondered whether donations were down.
On the books, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. You you had to bring them by on Thursday between like twelve and two. Well. And then they're like, well, we don't see as many books in our book sales, but they used to be. Well, there's a reason for that. So I I think having it being open and accessible, I mean, it's just like everything. You have to make it available to people and then market that.
So one of the things we talked about when we met with you last week, um, Eric, was about the fact that in our strategic plan, one of the things we know is we want our board to be more, um. Focused on being community facing.
Yep.
So do you, um, see that you have time in your schedule that you could be out inside in?
Definitely. I am in my job at Ingram, when I was a a library rep. I would have had to say maybe or maybe not because I was traveling a lot. I was basically one week in the office and then a week on the road. And some reps that worked for us were out every day. There were some old school sales reps that were out like literally every day of the week. They were out on the road with meeting with people and they were never in their office. Um, in my new job, I haven't traveled at all since May. And I don't anticipate that that's going to change. Um, I'm a solutions architect, which basically means I solve people's problems that they have with the technology. And effectively like our sales engineers who sometimes are on the road, I'm the sales engineer to the sales engineers for them. So I'm not traveling much at all and I haven't since May. Um, so, yeah, I wouldn't have no problem meeting the commitments that are here as far as time. Uh, and certainly being an advocate out in the community for events or things like that, whether that's coffee events or things like that. Try and get more people to be aware of the library, whether it's businesses or local community members. Um, that's what I, that's what I did in sales was basically be an advocate and evangelist. So, yeah, that's what I love to do.
Okay, so, and we, and I think we discussed too, we have these other, um, subcommittees, you know.
And you said finance. And policy. So.
So we're looking from people on on this board to participate.
Yeah.
Like, um, Jake and Jen and I are on the, um, on the, um, financial, uh, on the financial subcommittee now.
Sure. Okay. I have, I have no.
Creating a policy one. I don't even know, Jake, you know.
Yeah. Did you get voluntold?
Yeah.
We know he was.
Yes, it's all in, all in favor, right? Yeah, yeah, step forward, step forward if you object, right? Yeah. So, so. No, and 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 I would hope to be on those committees, at least some of them, because I think there's a lot that I could lend to those things. Whether that's specifics as far as strategy or whatever else. I I love to do those kinds of things. So I don't have a lot of nonprofit board experience in my recent history, but back when I was in college, I was part of our editorial board in college. Uh, I actually was secretary for about six months of the North Oakland County Board of Realtors back when I started college. I sold my way through, I not sold, not me, but. Uh, I I sold real estate to pay my way through college. Um, I went to Hope College. And, uh, so I was part of the North Oakland County Board of Realtors Board back then, and then I was president of the Business Network International. Which doesn't sound like a board really as much. It is more like a, you know, a networking group, but we did use Robert Truitt's order for that. So. You know, I'm familiar at least with the basics of those things too. So.
Okay, great.
What would, what would be something that would cause you to, um, want to leave a board?
If I had some other time commitment that happened to be more important, which I can't foresee that. Um, I mean, not to get too personal, my, both my parents are gone. They both passed the last, well, my dad passed in two thousand and four, but my mom passed this year. None of the rest of my family lives anywhere else other than in the area. So I can't imagine that I'd be traveling out of town to take care of an elderly parent or anything like that. That would be the only thing I could see is if it was some sort of a commitment for someone's health. Uh, other than that, I take these kinds of commitments pretty seriously and I and I enjoy them. So it's not like I have, would have a reason. If you're looking for like. Why people leave certain things. I left Ingram because it was a better opportunity by far from where I was at. I loved working with the libraries, but I couldn't pass up the money. So, uh, and it was a chance to work with a, in a different area than I'd worked before. So. You know, sometimes those things happen, but I can't foresee something like that being the case here. I was talking to my wife earlier about one question I had for you is what happens at election time with, what's the cycle for replacing the board members and electing a board members?
We're all up for election every four years.
Okay.
So, um, and I think. That.
About March, April.
Yeah, I have to say April at the latest.
Wanting to do it.
You, um, so as a, um. As a person that's, um, being elected, but it's for a library position like this and, you know, um, and it's a volunteer position. Think we usually have to pay a hundred dollars or you have to get fifty.
Forty or fifty signatures.
Yeah, um, which, um, I decided I paid the hundred dollars because I, um, Denise says, if you're going to do this, um, you have like a week. And I'm like, and, and yeah, and I was coming to, and I wasn't in town at the time.
Sure.
And I was coming into town and I thought. I'd be knocking on my neighbors' doors at eleven o'clock at night, right?
Right, right.
So I paid the hundred dollars. Um, so also during COVID.
It was, yeah.
That is true, but I, yes.
Well, and and to be honest with you, when we had our, my daughter was banned her senior year and we had a choice, a chance to do, they said volunteer work, everyone has to do twenty hours of volunteer work. Or it's four hundred dollars. And we just basically pulled up four hundred dollars at that point because it was COVID because we didn't want to have to necessarily mingle that closely at a bus with people. And we, because we felt our time was valuable for those kinds of things, we just ended up paying them. Yeah.
So she was educated by, as she heard, based on Green.
Yes, yes, Bob, Bob Green, yeah, Bob, I read it about about two weeks ago. So I read it in him all the time. He's easy to spot. So. Yeah, he is, he is great. He he was the band instructor for all three of my kids there. So my my son played saxophone and trumpet, trumpet mainly. Uh, my daughter played flute and piano and my youngest daughter played oboe, saxophone and piano.
Oh, wow.
And my wife plays harp. I'm sorry. No, you can't march with an oboe. It's a double, the double reed instrument doesn't work very well for marching. So, you have to hold it in your mouth the whole time. Um, no, and my wife plays piano and harp and I play golf. But, uh, yeah, I guess my question about the election side was, uh, that my wife and I were talking about tonight is. When the election comes up, how do you ensure that all of you are not only on the ballot, but actually have a chance at being elected? Versus someone that just happens to get the fifty signatures and doesn't know anything about the library, doesn't necessarily care.
You don't, you just have to go out there. Usually we run in the first August. And, um, and then whoever wins out of August ends up on November. Or not. Is that what we did last time?
I remember the twenty twenty election was straight to the dome.
It just went right to November.
Wow.
Yeah. I think it goes to be honest, if there are more.
More than six.
We had, we had to buy people around for six months.
Uh, oh, okay. That's interesting.
But we had a rent.
Yeah.
That was. Yeah. There was, yeah, and so Karen was right. So I was pulled off the ballot. Yes.
And there was one year we had somebody extra because you lost your seat. Do you remember?
Joe, Joe lost the seat.
Joe lost his seat. Somebody lost their seat. I know, it was ridiculous, but yeah, so.
I'd have to make sure that doesn't happen.
Sometimes, but you know, I I always go to the parking lot at my precinct. And then I'll hit maybe two more.
Sure.
Uh, just to say hi and say who I am and have a little piece of paper about me and my family and what I want to do for the library and then I serve for X money.
Sure.
So, yeah, so I I haven't had trouble getting re-elected, but I do remember one year there was an extra person.
So that, so, so that's because you had mentioned that too about ours. So that must be what it is. If we have more than six people, then then it's also.
Put six on there.
Not that I'm that worried about it. You can, you can do things to make sure you stack the deck in your favor for that, you know, by canvassing and speaking to people and.
Answer your question. We don't know.
Right, right. Well, and I've wondered in certain communities where anyone can write their name on and maybe for someone gets five votes because all their family member votes for them. Everyone else gets two, you know, do those people end up on the library board that they don't, even don't have an interest in it?
You know, but, um, you know, I think we were all were pretty close in the numbers, um, on the election.
Sure.
I think Jake won, won. I think he had the number one, he had the most votes. He probably had. Uh, yeah, I think he figured, okay, everybody went to high school, it's gonna come in.
Right, right.
Declare yourself as a right.
Got it. That doesn't count, right? I wasn't sure if that was how it worked for this kind of role too. So, okay.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I'd be more worried about not being elected than I would be about giving it up and moving on to something else. To answer your question. Um, no, I I I'm in it for the long haul and I did it for a two-year period, even though that's what this is for. It's two years, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I I had this as as sort of my eyes. This is the first two years, not the only two years. So.
Yeah.
I, I, because I was on the ballot, I couldn't work the election. I usually always.
Oh, right.
Like for the last five or six years.
That is where I've seen you then. Yeah.
I I worked the election and so that, uh. I couldn't do that this year.
Yeah, some of my neighbors were like, you said, you said we were going to help us. I'm like, you know, they work at our precinct. I'm like.
Right.
I can't, I'm on the ballot.
Yeah.
And you can't do that.
Okay.
You can if you're not on the ballot. So you can do, so, you know, like you can work in the primary, you can work, you know, the off elections.
Right, right.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, I know the decision is sometime between today and tomorrow because you have to. That's, that's good. Is there, I I I asked this in job interviews too, so I have to tell you that, like, it's, it is a loaded question. Uh, is there anything that I can tell you or do that would set myself apart from the other candidates at this point? Uh, is there anything that I can tell you or do that would set myself apart from the other candidates at this point? Well, I'm, I'm really excited about it, I'll make my final pitch, I, I'm really excited about it, I, I hope that you choose me for the position. Um, I think I have a lot that I can offer the library in terms of being an advocate. And I'd really like the opportunity to do that, so I'm excited about it.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks very much. Good to see you.
I said, I saw you.
That's exactly, so. Thanks very much, I appreciate it.
You had ten minutes.
Amy, it's good to see you. So, thanks for the opportunity, I appreciate it. Absolutely, I was, when I found out about it, I was very excited, so.
Yeah, well, good.
Well, we had eleven people applying and all.
That's good. I mean, frankly, that's, it's good to have competition for this because frankly, that's what you want to need in the community, is you need more people advocating for it.
And usually we have to like, hey, could your best friend do this, or you know, do you know anybody would be willing to do this?
Exciting that we have that many people that understood because that shows that there's that many people that, you know, are willing to give some effort to the library.
Sure.
And so it's pretty exciting.
That, that does bring up one other question, say that, my wife actually had the question, but I'll ask it sort of on her behalf. For the committees, is it strictly from the board that you poll or do you poll people from the outside for committees?
For committees, it's, these are subcommittees of the board.
Okay.
But there are other things that, that people can be involved in, and, um, especially when we go do the strategic planning. And the community will be very much.
Yeah, my wife asked how she could become involved too.
Well, and we always are encouraging people to be friends of the library. Because they are fabulous with the people.
Well, and I think we'll be talking April, you and I will be talking, but she's the president of the Brain Injury Association in Michigan. So she does a lot of local advocacy and support group stuff, so.
That would be fabulous.
At, at a minimum, be able to have some literature here for. Survivors of traumatic. Cause there's a lot of them. Yeah, so.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, thanks very much. Have a good night.
So, Amy, do, do we go to closed session because it's a personality issue?
It's not a personality.
It's not. I had assumed it would be going to closed session, so who can rule?
It, it would not be a. It wouldn't, it's not a personality issue. Um, it wouldn't follow, meet any of the criteria. It's, it's an open deliberation. This is why they have the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, so how do we do this vote? Because I don't know.
We just talk about it.
Sure. Is he gonna be picked up on mic, it's my only question. Why don't you just sit here? That's fine, so.
If you're going to. He has to have your information.
Yes, I will give it to you.
That's okay. Secretaries, you know. Everybody's here but April, but go ahead.
Uh, I came to this board meeting today because I was just interested in who was going to be selected and I wanted to make sure that the. Let me slow down. Make sure that the best candidate made it and I just made some observations as just a member of the public and I. Really liked Carol because of her ability to write the grants and I believe that. As Michigan is, you may or may not know, it's declining in population and funding, string that funding is gonna be very important in the future. I really like the advocacy of the other two candidates, but when it comes down to it, the library needs money to flourish. And being able to make those federal grants, like I was watching a YouTube video about the. West Bloomfield Township Library and they were getting grants from like the Dylan Melinda Gates Foundation and other places like that, I believe that that would be a, sorry. I believe that that would be a great benefit to the board, especially having that experience there. So as a member of the public, that is why I would.
Okay. That's why she made top three because of, of her experience with.
Alright.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's everybody that, everything that we interviewed was.
You were like a lot of technology and stuff.
Yes.
And you had a young family, you were getting ready to start and you know, there was a lot of good things about you that we enjoyed talking to you about.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Yeah, we need your name and address on, uh, verbally. You can just read what you wrote down.
Okay, my name is Dustin Kingen and my address is nine two one five, Bunston Boulevard, that is in White Lake, Michigan, forty-three eight six.
Alright. Okay, so since we're not gonna be in closed session like I thought. I guess. We can either, right, do you guys feel comfortable just one, two, threeing people right now?
Sure.
And then we can talk about, and just, and so we'll just do a one, two, three rank. Yeah, so like if there's a, like, if you really feel strongly about. Number one, and this is why, give us a chance to just exchange ideas and see if anybody wants to change. Okay? I mean, cause like. We could do library, who has a library card and, and you know, who. Talked about, you know, advocacy and all that other stuff, I said, you know, there's a lot of things that make people common. But there's also a few things that set people apart and what do we think, who's gonna be that best fit? To fill over in areas in our talent pool and what we're interested in and. And all of that, so I will just keep that here.
The candidates.
We can do that?
Why?
Then we won't know if we sway to anybody.
Yeah.
So, and if everybody is for the same person, then makes meeting shorter. So.
Alright, so we're gonna just go through and give our one, two, three.
We just rate, rate one, two, three and then talk about it. But talk about the candidates. Unless you wanna do it, which ones to do. I'm totally open. And then the ready, okay. So, well, let's just go in order, we had Carolyn.
I, I personally think she's, you know, I wish we had more than one opening.
Yeah.
Because I think Carolyn would be excellent, um, especially, you know, her grant writing and she's had, she's had a lot of, a lot of time on boards, um. So I thought she was, you know. Uh, of the candidates that I would choose, she's one of the two.
Yep.
I really, I really liked her, um, focus group moderation aspect, I think that's gonna be very helpful with the strategic plan and community engagement, understanding what. Patrons and members of the community would really want, you know, her experience and that I think would be invaluable.
Yeah, and I felt like her, um. Work with the. The colleges with the criminals. Working groups together was, um, was. A very, you know, attractive, um. Uh, experience that, you know, and I think it. It fills a gap that we don't. Particularly have. Uh, on that, on the board.
You mean like community groups that might have different aspects that you're looking for, okay?
Yeah, exactly, there.
For me, the grant writing really stood out because that's a science and it's. A very important. Is what my daughter does for a living, yeah, so I hear.
We should have her in to give a ten minute space.
And, um, and I know people who do grant writing are very passionate about it and. They're scientific about how they're doing it, so then the, the choices come in, so that grant writing really did pop out.
Need to, I mean, I don't have much to add.
She was the one of the three who was also trying to collaborate.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, any, any negatives, anybody wants to contribute, I mean. There wasn't, I didn't have, well, I didn't have any like red flags, like I was.
No, any red flags, it's.
I didn't see anything in her background or.
Yeah.
Alrighty, so then, Tim. Tim was next.
I like Tim's passion.
I do too, I, I, I think we put him in just because he's so passionate about it. I like the finance.
And, and honestly, I'm, you know, I'm always looking for, you know, someone that can really help with. Treasure, right, and move into that role at some point, because, because i- it's not appropriate that I'm in that role for a long period of time.
We've had people in that role for over ten years, so quit saying that, just quit saying it. Just quit saying it. Eventually, we'll get someone who knows numbers. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be me, yeah.
Yeah, right, so, and, and we, we interviewed people that were very clear that that wasn't something they were interested in at all.
Well, you don't want somebody unhappy with what you're doing. Feel unsure about that.
Right, so, um, but I think that, you know, the finance committee is important, I think, you know, um, the policy committee is important, so. You know, the thing I don't think, Tim, is he's got this, you know, strong accounting background. And he's very, very passionate and, um, so, you know, those, those were positives.
I, I think his vision of the library was, was very good, the library of things was one thing that we talked about in strategic planning and he. Basically took the words right out of our mouth there, in our mind there. Um, also, you know. When it came to how we would fit in the board, he mentioned that, you know, he really wants to make sure his two top priorities are the communities being served and the fiscal minded.
I think he'd be somebody that would really, um. I, I think that he would have to be on the finance committee if we were ever gonna pass a budget. Yeah, cause I think that he, he's, he would go through with finding, go.
Yes.
Right here, which really isn't totally what the board is supposed to do, but, but, but he has, you know, he's got a good point, you know, that. You know, we, if we have to prove to the, the community what our tax, what their tax dollars.
Okay, anything else on Tim? Okay, and then our last candidate was Eric. I like that he knows a lot about libraries and.
Okay, I, his knowledge of libraries and what's good and what's bad and the amount of time he spent in, you know, multitudes of libraries. I, I think is invaluable and also, um, I know enough about his, um. Advocacy for this library, that, and he is a very, um, well-known person in the community. And you know, he has no problem getting out in front of the community and saying all the great things that we need to say, oh, this library. And really, really encourage people to participate, so, um. It just, it just his library knowledge to me is pretty strong. And, you know, he's got a sales background. And, you know, and we need people to sell the library services. People don't know, they don't, you know, we really need to have that, um, advocacy out in the community that, you know. We have a lot to offer the library, we want people to use the library service.
And we owe a responsibility to market the library, so people want to be here to do things that will bring people in. And then hopefully, they'll. Go check out the library while they're here, so it's not all. Pushing out, you gotta have a plan to draw people.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, there's, I think, I like the separation there, it's like marketing versus strictly outreach.
Yeah, and, and, and we're gonna need it.
Anything else to add? Going once, did you have anything, April?
Now I pretty much agree with all of you on all of your.
Okay. You'll have to work with them too.
Yeah, absolutely, that's what we talked about before, you have to work with all of us, so, you know, if you had any red flags. I don't see any red flags on any of these. Just looking at, having done many interviews in the past. Looking at the sheer variety, I, I really like the sheer variety of libraries that Eric has been involved with. Uh, to me, that makes him look and know strategic planning, what to help with, what to move forward with that. And I think he would be a wonderful advocate in, of the community, that's for sure, definitely. I do like Tim's accounting background, he would be great with finance, I agree, really help that, understand and. If that's served with the funds that there are, that are available. And Carolyn, yeah, I think the grant writing is great, um, community work too. Uh, just looking at the numbers, for me, I think I had more positive in the Eric. Uh, in my Eric list than I did in the other two, so just looking at it like at its start's points. Thank you. It, this has been hard, this is very hard, I, I'll tell you.
This is a good hard.
This is a good problem to have and. Yes. Yes.
Let's do a, a first vote then.
Okay, so I'm gonna rank one, I'm gonna rank them in order, I'm gonna say them in order of my preference, okay? Eric. One, Carolyn, two, Tim, three.
Okay.
I have Carolyn one, Eric two, and two, three.
Ready, Jake?
Yep.
Go ahead.
I have Eric one, Carolyn two, Tim three.
Okay.
Um, I have, um, Carolyn one, Tim two, Eric three.
Oh, Eric was three?
Yeah.
Okay, I missed that. Okay.
Okay. So that means.
I don't know, do I vote? Oh, okay. Um, I.
Because we're not voting on the thing, that will be afterwards, we're choosing and then.
So I would like to give Carolyn a one and a half and Erica one and a half. I know. So at this point, if, to me, at this point of where we are. We need to know about grant writing, we need to do more about it, we need to find more grants out there, we need to make this. A part of our lifestyle and not. Something to make everybody do one, cause that's, because I said everybody had to do.
So, but.
But on the other side, we're heading into strategic planning and, and while. I would think if Eric puts his money where his mouth is, he would help us, right, he would volunteer and help us. Um, but, he would be very good information to have. On that, and I, I do love Tim, but, you know, we have a finance person for now. Okay, and, um, you know, and again.
I haven't started not doing it, I just think that there needs to be other people that would. But, and Eric did mention that in his first interview that he would be willing.
He'd be willing, but he didn't, he would need training. I'm fine with that, I just know me and I don't even do my own checkbook, so I. You know, I just, do we have money this week? Okay, great, I'm buying groceries, you know, that's. That's how I plan my finances, I can't do that for this organization, you don't deserve that, you know, so I know that's not me, I'm just saying upfront. So. You know, which is more important? I know.
It is, it is very difficult, um. But personally, I think our, our, our marketing and our strategic plan is more important this time.
Than.
The, the grant writing, because I, I think the grant writing is gonna be important in the future. Um, but I also know that we don't have the staff to do that at this time. Um, and it's going to take a lot of staff work. So I think that we're, by, you know, saying, okay, this is something that we're gonna focus on, it's something that we would need, um, April to be able to figure out. Who in staff's gonna be able to help with that. And I don't think we have that opportunity at this moment.
Well, don't speak for April.
No, but she actually did say something about it in our last, in one of our other meetings, and that's why I'm bringing it up, April said. I don't really have the staff capacity to help with that at the moment, and not that we shouldn't really. I don't really have the staff capacity to help with that at the moment, and not that we shouldn't really.
Yeah.
As part of our strategic planet, look at that, um, but I know that April said she doesn't have it at the moment, so.
Okay, well, the other side of that coin is, we're gonna have a great strategic plan that needs to be funded and how are we gonna do that?
Yeah.
I.
Right.
Right, you know, I don't know.
If I, if I can just.
Go ahead.
This too, um, I myself have grant writing experience too.
Uh huh.
So.
A lot of it's finding the grants at this point.
Finding the grant, it's finding the grant that your staff can. You have the availability of the staff to dig into that and to do that. Um, as I was talking with Jen today, and I think I've mentioned in the past, it's not just grant writing, but another thing that I want to look into our educational sponsorships. I have a great deal of per- personal experience with that. It's a much quicker, more tangible funding source that I was hoping to get to this year, uh, and kick that off. So, if we're, if we're long-term, sure, we wanna, we're always gonna look to grants. I have a staff number that I just sent for some training on grant writing. So that is always going to be something that we're. Look at, uh, wouldn't it be great to have someone on the board that could, could do that? Sure, that, that would be, but that's. That's one, that's one thing.
Hmm.
Whereas if we're looking at someone that can fill more spots, uh. That, that's. That's.
Hmm.
One, one he's compared to.
Okay, several.
Okay.
Jake, thanks. Uh, thank you, people, thank you.
Okay, so if we wanna look at what's coming up this year, it's Eric, you know, I think that's the bigger help.
Right.
If it's, uh. If it's, uh, just some history, we've been talking about writing more grants since two thousand and two. Just so you know, just so to actually see somebody who has some. Uh, expertise, expertise or experience in that is very exciting to me, so, which is why I'm leaning more. Towards Carolyn, but I'm not saying that Eric is not a great candidate either. He has a lot of practical experience.
Yeah.
And insight on that.
So in the next two years or, you know, less than two years.
Hmm.
What impact could? Any, anyone of the three have in the? On libraries? Funding, programs, and, and direction and, um, stability, uh, of the. If we, if we get grants, what type of? You know, um, dollar value would we, you know? Expect?
Hmm.
And, you know. You know, when during COVID, we got a number of. You know, COVID-related, uh, grants that were. You know, not, I won't say that they weren't easy, that they were easy to get, but they were, you know.
Easier to find.
Easier, easier to find, yeah. Guided there in terms of ongoing. You know, things. You know. Would you get a hundred thousand dollars of grants? I just, you know, I haven't seen anything that would say that you would, you know, and, and. And what's, so what's the kind of, you know, so if we're looking at, you know, five thousand dollars in grants? Be nice to have.
Hmm.
Would? Would, would that be, would, would that be a plus or would that be a draw or, you know?
What do you think, Jake?
Right now, I personally am thinking sort of to run with the strategic panel. I feel like that, like the, the vision should come before. The, the execution of the grants, but that's just, that's just my.
Okay, I'm good with that. I'm, now my other side of that coin is. He's an advocate and he has an opinion and it's not Eric's library.
Right.
And I'm, I'm not saying this to be mean, I'm just saying this, let's get it the other way.
Hmm.
You know, I think he's got good information. I agree with all of that, but, um. You know, I don't wanna. Get somebody who has only one. Opinion, it has to be that way.
Right.
You know, that's my only concern with Eric, but I do think he has, has great ideas and I think it'd be fun to work with. No one's ever gonna wonder what he thinks.
Yeah.
You know, and so, that's why I know, but I like that. I like it when you can have an honest, open discussion about stuff. So.
Very important.
But I just wanna make sure that you've worked with him, Amy. You know, is he someone who's going to? Get his own vision of what things should be or come in with a, his own set of ideas, or is he gonna be someone who will give some ideas out, but also listen to everybody else?
Working from him with, from a different perspective that we have, what sides are asking.
Yeah.
Um, just from experience, I think, with people that are, that.
Yeah.
Listening and reading what he has learned.
Yeah. And I should have asked him that when he was here. I, you know, I should have raised that concern then.
Again.
Yeah, but you've worked with him.
Person and, and a community member now.
Hmm. So, and you've worked with him a little, have your experience been good?
Library in our community as, you know, he was very, library advocate.
Okay.
For everybody and.
We talked a lot about the election and all that other stuff, so I'm glad he was involved and. So, alright, are we all leaning towards Eric? Is there anybody else that wants to talk?
We want. So we want my, with Eric as third, because I saw a lot of what he was bringing.
Hmm.
To the table was what our professional library.
What we're gonna pay for.
Well, yeah.
You know, we're gonna pay people for that.
So we've got professional librarians with the, with this expertise, um, and. You know, we, we trust you there, that, uh, and we trust your staff, you know, uh, there and, um. Uh, and yes, Eric's, um, experience is, uh, you know, is a. Is broader in terms of being in lots of different, different places, um. To their, uh, that's why I put him in a, a third spot is because, feel like, okay, you know, we've got that and it's like. He's a great, a great person to work with, he's very, very strongly to, to strategic planning, um. And he does bring, you know, things that, having that, that a lot of experience in a lot of different places, like the others is, is good, um. There, um. He'll, he's, he's not shy about, you know. He's not reserved, he'll, he'll, he'll speak his mind.
Hmm.
There, um, I think Tim will certainly speak his mind as well.
Yeah.
Um. And, um. He would bring up a, um. That you're a fiscal sense to it as well. Um, there, that kind of combination of the. Fiscal perspective and the. Where are we going? How are we gonna do this? So that let's, let's have a, let's have a plan that is based on. Objectives and is, is measurable and, um, but with, with a lot of, of passion.
I just think Eric i- is a stronger candidate just because of the history he has about good and bad libraries and how much time he spends with libraries.
Hmm.
I just, and I, I, I think that, um. You know, he, he also has a supportive.
My only thing with Tim was. I, I didn't feel that he's used libraries very much.
So, Tim, Tim had the highest number, so nobody rated him number one, so I've taken him out of the equation.
So it's really Carolyn and, okay, and, um, and Eric.
So Tim had four, a total of fourteen, just, just. Basic math.
My.
Eric had a total of nine and Caroline had a total of seven, so she had the highest rating numerically, but as we're talking here. You know, which way do we wanna go?
Hmm, um.
That I, I would be happy with any of the three, you know.
Because you made me do that one, two, three, because my progress was I had Eric and Carolyn.
The same, you know, they both filled two very different areas of.
Because, but if you asked us, okay. We're gonna, who are you gonna vote? I would have just said the person I was gonna vote for and that.
Yes, okay.
Right.
So you would have been Eric.
I would be here. As much as I like Carolyn, like I said, if I could do one and a half.
Yeah, that was where I was at.
Absolutely, just basically, but I'm looking at what we need on the board today and I just think that Eric's a better fit today. I, I shouldn't even say that. I think he might be the best fit, but I, I just think Carolyn's also phenomenal.
Okay. I mean, is it fair to ask Carolyn to continue being with the friends?
Absolutely.
And maybe come in and give us a presentation on grants?
She might be more willing to do that.
Yeah.
Hmm, and she might be willing, you know, interested in money for the board the next.
The next cycle?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Well, I'll support the, the rest of the group cuz I like them both for different reasons. So. I. I think, I'll just say, I think that we're hiring somebody to help us with the strategic plan, so. Eric's kinda double dipping a little on that, but you know, it's more than just the strategic plan too, it'd be his. His background and stuff, so I'll go with whatever you guys wanna do. It sounds like we wanted to.
Eric's point.
Okay.
Okay.
Eric.
That is fine.
Okay. That's majority, dear.
Okay.
So, are we, or we have to make a motion soon?
Yeah. We'd have to make a mo-, can someone make a motion to nominate Eric Shotwell as the replacement to. To appoint him to replace Beth Rubus's open spot?
Do you wanna?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Motion to.
Don't make him do that for the person that he doesn't want.
No, it's. I, I move to, uh, appoint. Eric Shotwell. To fill the. Vacant, uh. Library board trustee position.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I.
I.
The four yes votes, has it? I'm glad I couldn't.
Can I make a motion?
You may.
I'd like to make a motion to.
I have a second. At, uh, let me see, Jake, eight forty-eight.
All in favor?
I.
Close.